Commissioners meeting, I would invite you to join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is to approve the executive meeting minutes of September 19th, 2022. Based on a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the executive meeting, all executive section. All in favor, please say aye. Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, make some motion to approve the following claims as presented on the agenda.
I have a motion and a second to approve all of the claims as presented on the agenda. Motion and second, so all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. And with that, we are ready for County Highways here in Kent. Good morning, Kent.
Good morning. I had a couple quotes received for striping proposals I need to open. No. That would work.
No, no knives?
You know, they made a lot more sense when I designed that table.
I got a chainsaw. I got a chainsaw.
Were you one of them, in charge, building that table?
Uh, that was all me.
That was all him when you came in?
Yeah.
So, we don't remember, it used to be a...
A big circle table on a wall.
Yeah.
Your average came on.
Okay, first one guys from Indiana signed barricade. No place. I got an email from Indiana signed barricade. They're saying they're not going to bid on this proposal. I got another email from Airmarking Corporation out of Rochester. They're not going to bid on this proposal either. Next one I have is traffic control specialists. They have a bigger proposal, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-four cents.
How many grid?
It's varying, there's different types of striping, there's roughly, roughly seventy thousand monthly, million, few dollars, striping.
Thirty-five thousand?
Seventy-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand for thirty-one, wait, thirty-one thousand feet for thirty-one thousand dollars?
Seventy thousand, approximately thirty thousand feet.
Okay.
For thirty-one thousand dollars. This is all thermal plastic striping. The next bid is from RoadSafe out of Lafayette. Their bid is thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. That's all the bids I have. This is thermal plastic striping and it's, it's a good bid.
Thermal, plastic?
Thermal, plastic, it'll last twenty-five years on the road, unless it's far out. Well, maybe just on main line, so it shouldn't... Certain line, main line. Yes, I include hundred north, old lanes in front of the IPC and stop bars along that each, across you that stops.
One hundred north, where else? I'm sorry.
One hundred north will walk in front of the IPC.
Oh, okay.
And then stop bars, where, where, hundred north to stop. So, it'd be like three fifty, seven five, zero seven five. I think it's three fifty east, five forty-three, and zero twenty-nine all the way. There's curves on five hundred south. Crosswalks on one hundred seventy, one high five, and the Adams Mill, pretty much.
Well, gentlemen, what do you think of the bids?
Thirty, two is thirty thousand, seventy-four.
RoadSafe.
RoadSafe. Do you have this in your budget?
You want to, well, can't go through the bids and...
We won't be waiting another month, I don't know.
Now back to order committee.
Yeah, I'd like to instantly make sure that we're headed up correctly. Yeah, I could give them a tentative approval, because they'll start lining things up and they'll just approve it on how late we can. As far as temperature of, temperature that's...
Forty degrees or higher, airbrushed ride road?
Yeah.
Well, so we need a motion to accept both bids and allow Kent to follow over, right? We got a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Thank you, Kent, for putting that all together. By the way, I got a nice thank you, a little away from the ladies up there on nine fifty north about their little stuff. Private road that you, that our guy took down signs on and you have to put the signs back up. Very happy to get them with their signs back. I have a group down there to see you.
That one's plain, but that's the whole... That's all I have.
That's all we have?
Everybody on screen?
This is what this could be.
All right. Anybody have they can bring up? We can't confirm the road, auto wave. Well, thank you, Kent.
Uh-huh.
Kristen, you're up. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. So, I sent you guys an email and put in your box, a request at my budget hearing last week. I found out that morning that we are losing our pathologist.
Wait, who's what?
We're losing our pathologist as of Wednesday. So, the one, the other one that services this area, I spoke with him in the past. He was willing to come to our county, he is not willing to go to Monticello at the time. So, therefore, I spoke with the council members and put together a request for either ARP funds or Beth mentioned, maybe Q cap, to either renovate that front section of the building for an autopsy suite and a cooler, or adding on like a twenty-four by twenty little addition to the building to keep everything outside of the building. So, we currently have had eighty-nine days of storage this year and we're already at forty-three people that have passed away and we've spent ten thousand, four hundred dollars in storage and autopsy room fees for this year.
No, you have quotes here to add on?
In June, we had an estimate for renovating that front part, part, and it was around eighty-five. That included the HVAC, it included the cooler, it included everything we needed. I, I have not had time for the addition, just because it was Wednesday, Tuesday when we met, and I haven't had time to get a quote, obviously, for an addition.
Like where you walk into the front door, you want that perception of the building?
Well, we discussed, like, using the women's bathroom there and then just building a little, like, little shelter for the cooler outside and attaching like a door right there so you can get into the cooler. But the cooler would actually be out of the building.
Would it be better if it was in that driveway?
And that, that's what we discussed after the budget meeting, my chief deputy had come with me and we discussed, like, maybe just a small twenty-four by twenty off the side of the building, or just a little walkway for us to go in and out, but it would be just completely all in that section.
Would any of those offices on that side of the building be feasible to turn into the autopsy room? Like, so you just come right in from the outside and get one of those rooms? Like, your thoughts?
With the autopsy room, you're gonna have to run water.
Right.
To the autopsy room, and all the water lines are on the...
The other side of the...
The north side, the northeast side of the building, or on the, the northwest side where the, where all the trailers are parked right now.
So, am I thinking, like, at the best of you, when you first came into the church, this is the area you're talking about? So, if there are going to be meetings and such in the main, what used to be the sanctuary, will they still have access to that?
Well, we're gonna take the two side doors and use them as the main entrances if we, if we use that as the morgue. We would seal those doors off to help, help the smell stay out of the main building.
Okay, I'm trying to think of side doors, there's...
There's, there's one on each side, up by the, by the stage.
Okay, and they are single doors, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't think you need double doors.
No, I don't think so either, I was trying to get a picture here of where we're talking about.
And, and with that pathologist, he has not agreed to take us on. I have, have approached this, the concern right now and he is at the limit he really wants to be at, but we're hoping we can convince him. If not, we may have to travel to Fort Wayne or Terre Haute every time.
Yeah, they did the last one, if not, we're gonna have to...
Travel to like Fort Wayne or Terre Haute possibly every time we need an autopsy.
Why don't one build it for something?
Well, originally, he said he would, so I'm hoping that... And right now, we're gonna be taking him to White County to store, because I don't have a cooler, but then we're gonna still have to go pick him up and go somewhere else to do an autopsy, so...
Why all of a sudden they switch?
He sent the letter saying that he was, he didn't have appropriate staff. I don't know if he lost his second doctor, I don't know what happened. He said that he didn't have the staffing right now and he has so many counties in the state that he would not be traveling to our county anymore to service us. I know he's not gonna go to White County and I spoke with my association executive and she said that she has a letter out to him that there are several counties that are affected, south, north and south. So, I'm assuming he's just staying in a central location of probably the bigger counties that he served, that he had contracts with.
Okay. Who is White County?
They have the same one, so they're, they're stuck at the moment as well, but...
So, they're looking for somebody too.
Which, which we can approach them if he's willing to come here. I mean, they could do like we've been doing all along, because he said he wasn't wanting to go to White County, but again, with all the change, I don't know if he'll change his mind, I don't know. I know he just was hesitant, because he's not really wanting to take on a lot more work, obviously.
Right, that quote you gave me was just for changes in the building, was it?
Uh, the eighty-five?
Yeah.
No, that had equipment also, yeah, that was everything.
So, that's cooler and equipment? We still need a cooler?
Yes.
Yeah, what type of a cooler are you talking about? You got a...
Um, the ones, I mean, like, what we use now is just a stack, three stacked, it's a portable. I mean, we just, we don't move it, but it just has three shelves.
You can only accommodate three bodies in the sun.
I mean, that's what we've kind of just thrown around, looked at, I mean...
Military surplus like we had before? That last cooler come from the military surplus that Sheriff Randall found.
Right.
That was on eBay, that's all we used for sale.
Yeah. I heard they're using it in haunted house.
It's so...
Yeah.
There was one on, on GovDeals.
Okay.
I saw it last week.
Okay.
Was tall, I have pictures, and it was a four, my floor here, probably like that tall, that's all it was. Doors, maybe scroll it on the girby, into, um, there were two of them. I don't know if it sold or not, I was, I saw it on there. I don't even remember where it was, it could have been Arizona.
What is the price of it? Like, a six million?
Uh, we, uh, six, you're probably looking at close to eight, sixty-eight thousand, maybe. The, the three were about four, and that was when we looked at them last, that was back...
So, if we can't get the room built, because I don't want to spend the money for any of the accounts, but we do need a cooler for storage to help you out. If we can ask council to get that out at any day or something, eight or nine thousand to get it, because we're in settled out there in that carport area or wherever defense would work.
Well, we'll have to do something to secure it and, I mean, privacy. I mean, there'd have to be a little bit of something, because...
I don't think it's taking much to fill that in, because you've got two walls.
Right.
We probably have about fifteen grand and everything, I'd say.
Well, it seems like it's about fifteen, you can about double or thirty and say, that might get one.
Hopefully get like a three place, and make it big enough space, you better have a place inside it someday.
And we talked about that as well.
Yeah. Did your research and come back that I think we're in favor of doing, but without the gentleman wanting to do it, that's a lot of money to throw out there, just to have a room sitting there.
Okay, you said, well, we need a cooler for her anyway, so we need to build this another apartment, I'm trying to figure this out.
That didn't include all...
If not, we could be traveling, you could just, no, that did not, what did, what, the eighty-five did?
What, the, how big areas have they...
Not very big, I mean, how, my topic is that room at White County, you say?
The autopsy room? Probably ten by ten, ten by twelve.
It, because the cooler currently sits out in their garage part and then that's, the room's right there in the garage.
So, they will, some of them, one room per unit?
We just thought if we just do it all in one area, we don't need a wall in between, we don't, I mean, we just thought enough space to maneuver and work.
And what you suggest, Beth, we need the money from... Our arts?
Capital project, fifty-four, you know, she mentioned our manual. Riverboat, rainy day, I mean, I don't know, I mean, what the council will think.
We've got one in, I think we just got.
We have, yes, we have, we have, what, a hundred thousand, are we gonna do for first floor renovation? We turn it over every year here, if we can get that done, year mark for this project. You don't have a builder in mind or anything like that, though, right?
The one, just the one that gave us the one quote, our estimate so far, I know he's swamped, so, I mean, I, if we were gonna do an addition, I was gonna reach out to maybe Little Pond or Oak Lawn and see if they would be, I mean, and we talked about, like, just simple, I mean, we didn't know if they could do like dirt plate wall, where that way it's easy to be washed in, or instead of drywall.
Well, I would think you want something like that.
Yeah, so we, I mean, just something, so I was gonna reach out to them and see if they could do it and if they were interested in trying to give us a quote.
Going back to Q cap, I mean, that specifically does say courthouse. And during the custodian's presentation to the council, he mentioned three different projects.
Are used for that?
Yeah, but...
We gotta get this, those stairs, drywall and plaster.
But you also have to have, not just a quote, you have to have a bill to encumber it, that you did put a back in your budget, so...
So, I'd like to ask you, if we go forward, check out this building, we're gonna take bids on that, I don't know whether it's gonna be over. You're saying eighty thousand dollars, that's a, we'd have to probably break it out into a apartment and building, but the building, would we have to take bids on that?
I'm not sure of that, it's, it's public construction, for sure, but there are, there have been some, let's see, changes made based on the size, but I, I have to look those limits up. It's not maple, it's obviously, it's new construction. You know, I don't know, city, nothing is city permitting, is that, you'll have to require a city permitting too. I'll have to look that up, see if there's an exception, if it can be done under alternative means of doing it other than competitive bidding, I mean, if you have some kind of specifications. If, if you don't have specifications, we can certainly solicit specifications from prospective contractors to consider. You don't have to rely on, you know, specifications to do that, so, let, let me check that out.
But it'll have to have water lines and all drains and all that stuff, right?
If, if you stayed within that front, we were thinking taking out that restroom, so you already have the water.
Just have to be...
Yeah, you're just, yeah, and...
Okay, so...
We would move the same...
That kind of carport thing that's out there now, that's what you're talking about closing?
No, that would, you would, that's on the other side of the water, so that would, yeah, that, if we were adding...
Towards the, towards the old twenty-five, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we were adding, I would have, I would add over there, just because your water lines are all right there along that side of the building. Is what we were thinking.
That's what's going. That's a general replacement, that carport area. One of those things, water. If you walk in, double doors, your bathroom...
Straight on.
Straight on.
Yeah, straight on.
And you're gonna keep the other bathroom, or just...
Yeah, we figured we could keep that for the pathologists to do what they need to do, wash up or whatever.
There's already another set of bathrooms in there, right?
Yeah, there's another one up front.
There's that handicap bathroom.
There on the other end?
On the other end.
So, so the women's has the bathroom and then it has like a, I don't know, like a sitting room type? So, we thought that sitting room is where we would put, like, the bedding, the bed and the cooler, then we'd go past the bathroom and then we could have the sink, we'd just move where the sink is, use the same water, just shift it. Because it's, it, it's laying on a wall.
Because you're gonna have to close off that room anyway, right? Where we walk into the meeting area?
Yeah, you would shut, seal those double doors.
Might have to go ahead and just do it and put your office in there too.
Well, my office is already at that end. It's straight from the bathroom, as you walk in, the front doors.
Okay. So, just take that, well, you need a bathroom over there anyway. I would say take it all out and reconfigure it.
I, I don't think I'm quite getting the picture, why, we're thinking that vest we were, we're like, I haven't been in there since I entered the queues. That's not big enough room, vest we were in.
No, it is, it is.
What are we adding on for, is the cooler?
Yes, just to house the cooler outside, that wouldn't be, but just a little cover for the cooler, basically, to protect it.
Okay, I'm getting this better here. You have to put a door through to the cooler?
Yes.
And you're wanting to just, what, two capacity, four capacity cooler?
Uh, three or four, probably. I would say at least three. And they were like three, four thousand dollars.
Add on layers?
Do you like...
Then we can add on some layers. I think we're good, the right person would be done with it.
Well, that, you're absolutely right, I was just thinking, um, the difference in cost between a three and a four, or five or six, nobody's prepared much. The only thing I have to relate to is just a food lock in cooler. And once you get beyond the ten metro, you double it, but not that much more money. You don't think that's more cooler or anything like that? I don't know, maybe these are so specific, specific that we need to do that, I don't know. So, how do we move ahead on this?
I need to get, um, a couple more quotes, if you can, I'm gonna say a six cooler. I will have, if we ever have.
I can look at walk-in versus the shelf.
You have a quote now, that's complete?
We had an estimate, but that was back in June, so I don't know what prices are at now.
So, how are you...
I think I need to find out if there is an exception for a project under a certain size and equipment would not, is not public construction, you can separate the equipment out from the actual construction, so there may be some shortcuts available. So, I think the main thing is, do you want the, you want to participate or a member of the commissioners participate working with the corner of developing specifications? Or do you want, you, the commissioners could put a notice in the paper, request the specifications and then give opportunity to more than one contractor that, that may tell you what? Because if you, if you have one contractor giving you an estimate and then, or you find out you've gotta do it by probably a vivid minimum or something like that, you've disadvantaged that, that one, or taken advantage of that one purpose.
Is it all worth it?
So, I think when you've got, if you've got a set of what you want right now without specing it out, maybe the thing is to do a notice, give, invite specifications to each of the contractors to, to give you specifications and then we may find out that you can do it by close without having to advertise for bids and stuff.
Do you have a drawing on what you want? Put together, so we can like hand it to the contractor and say, hey, quote this?
I don't, but I can come up with one.
Is that what, that kind of...
Yeah, and I, I would say do that for the, for the next commissioners meeting, where they all know what the dollar amounts are and then if you put in there, you're taking for the paper or correct.
And Howard County did approach me a while back, they do have an oversight... And Howard County did approach me a while back, they do have an, an oversized table that he was willing to sell us. I don't know what the prices are on those new, but he was, he had two, White County already spoke one for one, and it was, like, he thought twenty-five hundred to three thousand. The other one's still avail, or was still available last time I spoke. So, um.
I know, come back to the next meeting.
I can use, I mean, I'm not a gitch, I can use to, to help save.
Right. I'd kind of have to make the teachers come down, look at the. Teachers, yeah.
Separate.
Up there. Number one.
Yep.
You can inspect it as a group. Side inspection, side inspection of a project is, is exempt from, uh, the door law notice requirements. You could all go and inspect it with whoever you wanted, do it in arranging, and it would not require, uh, it would be, not require the forty-eight hour notice application.
And what it do, is this something in the paper, would like to be there with us, or with us?
Um, well, you know, the open door laws for the public, as well as the newspaper, I would just warn you that, yeah, you can inspect as a group, but you can't be discussing it, uh, you can't make decisions, that kind of thing.
Make a decision, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, you can, you can hear the, the explanation. I'm not much for morgues, I don't know. Uh, and it's, it's.
A morgue, yeah, it's.
I know, but it's, it's so early on, you know, I don't know that it, that I could write it in a way that would be meaningful to the public.
Okay.
But thank you for the.
Obtain information while you're there.
Are we, that's what?
You can, you can obtain the information, you just can't decide any, you can't discuss, it's just.
But, um, my thought was, even if you were to go write an opinion article, you just wanted to be there to know what's going on, so someday you could write the article, I don't care.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Let me know.
I guess if any of you want to draw the morgue, come in and do it, uh. Okay, so you found it? Let's get our act all together here for the next meeting, we'll put this back on each other. Now, how time sensitive are you this, you said you're a pathologist, you're gonna be when?
Uh, Wednesday. This.
This Wednesday. Get it done by Wednesday.
No. And obviously, that's beyond our control, I don't know yet, other than.
Andy, for a lane. Well, just tell them, we'll just put it in the paper, no one's allowed to die until we get this done.
Got it.
I, I mean, I, I'm hoping that we can get the one, but it doesn't look real promising yet, but.
So, we would just have to drive.
Wherever will take us.
I'm just afraid we'll put all that money into it, and it won't happen. But if you build it, they might come.
I said, I know, he said in the past he would, but again, he's taking all the money.
I'm being a pathologist, not the, not the deceased.
Not the cadavers, okay, well, let's.
Thank you.
I, I would appreciate if you put together sketches for me to see, and, and, uh, I don't know, when we're, we might have to wait until after the next meeting, you go out there, the three of us will get more information.
I kinda know what's going on, but I've been down there.
I kinda know, I'm gonna see it.
Yeah, I kinda do too, but I kinda like standing right there to look at it, too, and see it, so. Okay, well.
I'll pop in if I can, if you can hear that.
I'd say call me, I can let you know when I'm there, when I'm not, uh, if they're all they pay.
That's something three.
Thank you.
Uh, EDC Director Jerry. Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning. Uh, I just wanted to keep a cadence with the, uh, the broadband contract, and make sure that we were still on track, and if there was any questions or points of clarity. Uh, so really, I didn't have anything to bring to the committee.
Close to that contract at all?
Well, is Dustin here, I thought, okay, yeah, I, I think between Beth and I, we had, we, we think we know the answer to the first question, was, and this involved asking Dustin, was, will we repay it? If the county receives, uh, what we're anticipating is, uh, paying money to the EDC, who in turn have a contract, or will have a contract with the broadband company, uh, to, to build out a, uh, an internet ring, uh, will money coming back to the county, because the Board of Commissioners has already voted that they want to, want to share fifty-fifty, or fifty percent of whatever comes back, comes back to the county? First question is, is that permissible under the ARPA regulations, without, uh, having any problem federally with the ARPA regulations? And the second part of that, does money coming back to the county from this source negatively impact the budget of the county for the following year, as other revenue coming back to the county? Does that create a, uh, uh, an other revenue that, that would, uh, damage the budget, right?
Right, um, after talking with Jackie, our financial advisor that helps us with our budgets, um, she's stated, like, all other things that are reimbursed, it has to go to the fund where it was, it came from. So, that's the sticky part that I, you know, we all said it was, um, for things that we could use, or from county general, but it really came from ARPA, so, I just.
So, that's, that's the question.
So, um, on the first piece of the question, you're actually a beneficiary, so I understand, of, of major, major change, uh, that the Treasury recently put together in their latest round of frequently asked questions, which was published on July twenty-seventh. Um, Treasury changed, uh, a whole, a whole raft of things, particularly as it relates to the expenditure of the ARPA funds, what characterized as revenue loss. And as a reminder, all of your funds are going to be in that revenue loss category. Uh, one of the changes that they, they put together, um, is the ability, so previously, um, this was an issue that we were running into in the, in the discussion of the broadband project, and, and repayment of the funds, um, you were unable to loan the ARPA funds, sort of directly, or as ARPA funds, uh, in any long-term way. Uh, because a loan pursuant to the final rule was not considered as expending the funds, and you have these sort of time horizons in which you have to expend the funds. Treasury in the, in its, in its FAQs has, has changed that, um, they've identified that the revenue loss, um, component, right, when you're spending funds as revenue loss funds, that those loan rules no longer are going to apply to you. So, Treasury's interpretation of their final rule is that when you're expending revenue loss funds, um, at the point of lending, those funds are considered expended, um, for purposes of ARPA. So, at the point at which you lend the funds, um, ARPA considers you to have spent the funds, and so, uh, when that loan is repaid on whatever terms you make the loan, uh, that money comes back to the county not as ARPA funds, you're not, uh, those, those funds are just, that, that characterization is wiped out by the lending. So, previously, uh, prior to those July twenty-seventh FAQs, we had discussed several ways to sort of structure the expenditure of the ARPA funds, that avoided, uh, the issue of, of a long-term loan of those funds, by re-characterizing the funds as, as county general funds, um, by expending them on other things, and then using general fund dollars to make the loan. So, now, uh, under the July twenty-seventh FAQs, you can directly lend the ARPA funds to the EDC on, on, you know, on terms that, that have those funds repaid. Um, and, and ARPA will stop being involved at the point at which the loan is made. And that loan can be for, for a length that you consider appropriate. Um, regarding the question of impact on the county's budget, I would have to confer with the DLGF or the, and the SBOA on, on that. I don't have any answer to that question. Uh, but the loan rules have been made, it's, it's an enormous liberalization that, that massively simplifies this, uh, this project in particular.
I think we need to know the impact of the budget.
I would think, we would want to know that.
Well, can I keep the, the, because it's a thirty-six month payback, that, I would, I would just encourage allowing us to move forward with the contract agreement, knowing that we have to figure out the impact on the county budget, so, so what I'm saying is, I would try, I wouldn't let that be a barrier to us allow, execute the contract, um, and then coming up with a resolution for the county to figure out how those funds get back into the general fund. Unless you think that they're, that that itself is going to be a showstopper for the money coming back to the county at all, which it doesn't sound like it's.
It could affect the rate, though. You're, you're letting, I mean, I mean, that's, that's the, the question.
Yep, I understand. Yeah, is the yet the right, the right?
And an alternative could be that the EDC, and I, I'm probably, I'm probably, Mary Ann here, could be able to talk in greater detail, I think that's a conversation with Mary Ann and Ted, to figure out if it is gonna affect the rate, can the EDC hold, hold the funds, and, uh, make it susceptible to, uh, county appropriation to be able to be expended? So, essentially, the funds would be held at the EDC, and we would have no appropriation or no control of the funds without written authority from the Board of Commissioners and the council, uh, so that we don't impact the rate, just, I'm thinking alternatively to that. So, there's still trans, there's still transparency in the funds, there's still control direction of the appropriation in the contract, um, and we're not impacting the rate of, of what we're using to govern. That's just a, I don't know if that's practical, but.
I don't know whether that's doable, I, I, I honestly never had that come up.
Okay. I'm happy to run that by you, both of you, like DLGF and SBOA.
Thank you.
So, how do we find out the exact, this is, uh, by DLGF?
We have, we have.
You are going to?
Yeah, we have, we have, we have contacts at, at both.
Another EGR study.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I'm sensitive to Beth, and she's made it very clear that, that our goal is to not disrupt the county finances and just sort of deal it, uh, by any stretch, so if we can get clarity on that, and Martin's lawyer can work through that, then I want Beth as comfortable with it as, as she can be.
So, we wanna keep moving along here, get some, here, we're on the.
Is that right?
But I will say, from an ARPA standpoint, it's, Treasury has made it very easy, from this point forward.
So, does the return in money, do they should pay?
Yes, I'm, I, yes.
So, we, I guess we're, we're here probably.
You're gonna get paid back, or you're, you're gonna get paid back, and this, and the confusion is if they give it back to the county, but you didn't really want to give it back to the county.
Right, I was willing, correct, I was willing to put together a plan that all the reimbursed funds would be either used for economic development projects, incentives, right, we were gonna hold the one.
Why can't it be used for broadband on there, extending and not economic development projects? That's where it's, that's where it was, the loophole on there, and I don't want to call it a loophole, but the difference.
And, and so, when we, when we came up with the number of seven hundred fifty thousand for broadband last mile, that was, that was a loose number, because we don't know the true need beyond the initial investment, and so, the goal wasn't to come back to the county to try to get more funds to extend those. So, we just, we, we came up with a number that was half, that was, that was the starting point. Now, I, I agree with you, Beth, that it may take another one point five of the same funds, I say same fund, but they're gonna be appropriated and paid back, to redeploy another, um, swath of, of broadband, so I, I'm, I guess, I think we just wanted to leave it open for the reuse of the repayment of funds, and our start was seven hundred fifty thousand, but if it was capital projects the county had priorities for, then that was available as well. So, I, yeah, I, we don't have this penned exactly, uh, but we just want to make sure that the broadband solution is being delivered, and if it's seven hundred fifty thousand, and it's all of it again. Our goal really is to keep this revolving loan fund available for broadband to any capacity. So, these funds, our goal is to not expend them, and then we go away. So, they would be continued to be renegotiated and redeployed as the county gets each home booked up, and as we go, because this is gonna be a ten-year endeavor, essentially, to get every home booked up. So, um, and we've already had broadband providers come to us and say, hey, when you get that repayment back, we would love to work a deal with you to deploy another six, seven hundred homes. And it, it wouldn't be the same company, it doesn't have to be the same company we're working with on this, so. We want to make it a competitive space, and the revolving, this kind of revolving loan fund, uh, with capital is gonna allow us to be able to do that. Whether it's seven hundred fifty thousand and half of it comes back to the corporate, whether it's one point five, and so, and then whatever mechanisms the county wants to put into place.
The other thing I would like to have clarified, you say one point five today, the other day it was one point six.
Seven hundred thousand, those for menstruation, just like that.
Right, but we've gotta, we've gotta top the whole amount here.
Yes, ma'am.
Because when it goes in the minutes, it's.
No, but I, I agree with you, I, I agree with you, as much as.
Is that okay, I mean, so what is it, is it one point six?
The total would be one point six.
Okay, got it, all right, so that would be eight hundred thousand, that they said they would go up to fifty-fifty.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I had one more thought about this, and this probably doesn't involve Dustin necessarily, was, uh, the ones that I've seen from other states and communities, there was a competitive nature to the, uh, the process, whether you call it a grant, whether you call it a loan, uh, they, they opened it up to other companies to do it. Now, I understand this one, because, uh, it's a, it's a ring, it's more like an infrastructure, and not necessarily, you know, uh, subsidizing private company for something that, uh, is only gonna benefit them, because this is a benefit county for sure. Uh, but I just want to make sure that, that there's, uh, it, it, and I haven't, I haven't checked with anybody else on this, I'm not sure. I think because we're doing it through the EDC, I don't think the EDC has to do it competitively. I mean, in terms of notice and opportunity to, uh, an application process, because you.